Good morning to you, everybody. It's November 23rd, 2021, nine o'clock, four AM. Regular Navy Commissioners Court, Liberty County. We have all the commissioners present today. So, and from the zooming in, let's see, Captain Tom is there with us, with Bickerstaff? And I believe that it's, yeah, we have their chair. Thank you for being here today. Good to see you. We have one joint getting sitified. He's the Bickerstaff also. First things first. Should leave his new side. If you would lead us, Lee, in the legislature flags.
Please face the American flag.
Our pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please face the Texas flag.
On the Texas flag, our pledge allegiance to the Texas, one state, under God, one and indivisible.
It is Thanksgiving, just a few days, and everybody has opportunity to go visit their families. It's one of the most traveled days of the nation coming up. So if you're going somewhere, follow the rules. I don't know what the airplanes have on nowadays, chief, but I guess we can find out, couldn't we? We want to go take a plane ride. Me, I'm going to hang in off Shayskill and Longwood. That's where I'm going to stay. But anyway, the, Lord, a prayer this morning from Brother Carl Williamson up in Cleveland. And I thought it was pretty, pretty significant for today. So if y'all would pray with me. Lord, give me arms that I might raise as I give you honor, glory, and praise. Lord, give me the eyes that I might see the work that can be done in me. Lord, give me ears that I might hear the cry of those who need me here. Lord, give me lips that I might speak comfort and peace to all who seek. Lord, give me a mind that I might know how to help those who need me so. Lord, give me hands that I might do some large or simple things for you. Lord, give me a prayer I might pray for thy help and guidance every day. In this one thing, plus all else above, Lord, give me a heart so I can love. Heavenly Father, as we move into this Thanksgiving season and on and further into the season of Christmas, may we all know and remember what the seasons are for. And may we all have that heart that we can love one another as we need to do, as not just to see a county, a state, or a country, but as all people should. Or we ask these things in Jesus' most precious name. Amen. Notice and proclamations. Well, the first thing we have today, it's Giving Tuesday, Bridge Haven Children's Affairs Center. And we did have a proclamation here, so looking for my Bridge Haven votes. Are they here? Well, yes, we're going to go ahead and read your proclamation, so I'll make your, yes. No, just proclaiming as I can. Whereas Giving Tuesday was established as a national day of giving on the Tuesday following Thanksgiving. And whereas Giving Tuesday is a celebration of philanthropy and volunteerism, where people give whatever they are able to give. And whereas Giving Tuesday is a day where citizens work together to share commitments, rally for favorite causes, build stronger community, and think about other people. And whereas it is fitting and proper of Giving Tuesday, get on every day to recognize the tremendous impact of philanthropy, volunteerism, and community service in the county of Liberty. And whereas Giving Tuesday is an opportunity to encourage citizens to serve others throughout this holiday season and during other times of the year. Now therefore, being known that IJ9 County Judge, along with the commissioners of Liberty County, to hereby proclaim November 30th, 2021, as Giving Tuesday in Liberty County. And I encourage all citizens to join together and give back to the community in any way that is personally meaningful and is witness this day. So we're not quite to Giving Tuesday. We're a week away, but today's court day. So y'all give. Give me Tuesday. Give thanks for everything you have. All righty. Now, today is my favorite day of the year when it comes to the youngins in Liberty County that, well, they have to deal with the Liberty County 4H. It's the annual 4H update. So y'all come on up and visit with us.
Good morning.
Thank y'all.
Favorite day of the year.
I wonder which one of y'all is going to use these condoms to do the. Is that right? I figured they were talking something about.
So just want to tell everybody, good morning. Happy Thanksgiving. For those of you that don't know me, my name is Amanda Brooks. I'm the Liberty County 4H Extension Agent. And we come every November to Commissioners Court. Thanking y'all for your support, not only to Texas A&amp;M AgroLife Extension, but specifically to our Liberty County 4H program. Near and dear to my heart. I brought some special kiddos with me this morning to kind of highlight our program. But quickly, I just wanted to give you an update on our program as a whole. And our 4H year runs like a school year, so we run September 1st to August 31st, or 30th, sorry. So this past August, our enrollment closed out with 237 youth members and 34 adult volunteers. And then we start re-enrolling September 1st for the New Year. So already for the 21-22 year, we currently have 233 members. So we're four shy of what we closed with, and we have surpassed our volunteers. We already have 39 adult volunteers for this year. So we're growing. We currently have eight community clubs and one project club, which is our saddle club. So it's geared towards horses. And then we have a shooting sports program that is about ready to get started, kicked off again after the New Year. And they got going. They got chartered. COVID hit. We shut down. We couldn't do anything. We couldn't meet or do the practice. So it's great to be open. Our kids are getting to participate again. They just completed TVE, excellent auction numbers, lots of great participation. But I brought a handful of our Liberty County 4H ambassadors with me and then two of our senior 4H members. Normally, senior would be high school nine to 12, but these young ladies are graduating seniors this year. And they accomplished some pretty cool things this year. So I'm going to give them a minute to highlight their program so you can hear what some of our kids do.
Amanda, everybody could just tell us their names. Lenee's is here.
Yes, sir. That is part of their plan. So who wants to go first? Chance, go for it.
I'm Chance Sutton, and I am from Plumb Grove 4H. I am the vice president of our club. I had just finished TVE with 12th place for rabbits, just out of the auction. And I finished, I think, 12th in livestock judging. And I also just recently went to State Fair and got 94th out of 248 livestock judging. And I've got a steer for the Cleveland Show in April and rabbits.
I'm Madison Parker. I've been showing 4H for five years under Mid County 4H. I am the president of our club, and I do breeding beef and commercial heifers. I placed 10th with my commercial heifer this year, and I went to district for public speaking. But unfortunately, I didn't get to go to state because I'm still a junior.
My name is Kaylee Fadu. I'm in Plum Grove 4H. I'm a treasurer. I do a show and I do photography. I am a state photography and a junior photography photographer.
I'm Marley Brooks. I'm a part of Plum Grove 4H. I'm the president of our, of our club. I've been a part of 4H for the past 10 years. I've done a few things throughout the district. Two contests I've done are the record books. I've got first place in district and then ended up going to state and got fifth place there. I've also participated in the choreographer team at district. I got first place in our district as well. And then moved on to state and got third there.
Hi, I'm Emily Capps. I've been in 4H for, going on seven years. I do a lot in home economics. This past 4H year, I got to go to district where I placed first in fashion show, which took me to state where I unfortunately didn't get to place, but I had a great experience. It was a great time.
So I'm going to highlight on some of these kiddos as well, not only that do they do for themselves, but they have come back to give back to our county. Kaylee hosts photography classes and camps for us. Marley has done some line dance classes. Some of y'all may not be familiar with the categories, but when she says she competes in choreographed routines, she goes and she performs dance routines at the district and state level. So they come back and teach that. Emily just hosted her first sewing camp, and so all of them have done at least one of these camps, and they're hoping to expand and do that multiple times throughout the year. So if anybody has any questions, I think we highlighted our major. Do you all have any questions for us? All right. Well, we appreciate y'all having us, and again, thank you for your continued.
Y'all might have a question about shooting sports.
What? We're all within the curations? Absolutely. Yes, sir. So we just had two coaches go get certified the second weekend of November. And like I say, they were getting started, but with COVID, things kind of shut down. So we're going to have some informational meetings, let those coaches meet with some kids and guys. It'll be up to those coaches to decide where we practice at. So as soon as we come down, I'll let you know.
I've recently just got word.
Yes, sir.
Fix the store back up here.
Okay, I'll be good. All right, that sounds great. But yes, sir, we will keep you updated. Thank y'all for having us.
Any public comments this morning? The one side of the public comment. He always never see. Public comments today. Declare, declaration conflicts of interest. Does anyone have any, they declare as far as conflict of interest? Consent agenda. Do I have any animals here today? Any questions, concerns?
Budget amendment. Yeah, you have anybody?
I don't.
I'm going to approve the consent agenda. Second, the budget amendment. Bruce pointed me what the details of my agenda.
I did that. I did that. I did that. That's accounting entry. Those expenses were in the deferred revenue account, and I have to move them to the budget for financial statement presentation. It happened last year. This is my big class.
I wouldn't, I'm not exactly what it was.
Yeah, I got to put that, I got to put that expense and road bridge and take it out of that.
Okay.
You got a second?
Yeah, yeah. Motion from Greg. Thank you from Bruce. All favor say aye. Motion here. Thank you. Number eight, regular agenda, Mr. Brown. Anyway, consider and approve the overpay refund for Coach Michael and Ivy Texie, number 1264, in the amount of $6,047.74. I believe that.
I'm here. I'm Chrissy Wiley.
Yeah, Chrissy, okay. I didn't see you by Kenny.
I'm here.
It's just.
It was a, actually, it was a redemption on a tax sale. So the owner that redeemed it is paying the taxes. This is the person that had bought it. So it's just overpaying.
Make a motion to approve. Second.
Yeah, motion approved. Second, Leon. All favor say aye.
Aye.
Likewise, next. Thank you, Chrissy. And the auditor's office, consider and approve authorize the county auditor per local government code, again, 130.902D, to increase the change fine used for daily operations in the county clerk's office by $80 due to the addition of two new cash drawers.
It's a legal step we have to follow whenever we, this next two months, for the cash drawer, county auditor, if you're presenting to Commissioners Court.
Yeah, make a motion for, second. Motion for Leon. Second, David. All favor say aye. Likewise, next. Motion carries. Thank you. Number three, consider and approve authorize the county auditor for local government code, N130.902D, to increase the change fine used for daily operations in the county tax office by $200 due to the addition of two cash drawers. Same scenario. Both for you, please. Second. Motion for Leon. Second, David. All favor say aye. Likewise, next. Motion carries. Thank you. Number four, Douglas, so we're permits engineering, consider and approve delivery platform for the Land Verde, states located along County Road 6242.
Yes, sir. This is a minor planet. It qualifies because it's less than four lots, and there are no interior runways that are going to be constructed. So the drainage will sheet feed to the county road as it currently is doing. We've done everything on this to do the elements that we need to do. This is preliminary presentation to Commissioners Court. If you approve this today, we'll come back to you next week. Received from my law, and this is a minor planet.
Make a motion to approve.
Bruce, thank Leon. Approve. All favor say aye.
Likewise.
Turn five, Mr. Douglas, consider and approve request for Colleen Ridge to accept the roads in Santa Fe six and seven. In the county's two-year warranty period, if approved, the developer will continue to maintain the roads and roadside trainings for a two-year period. Then, if accepted, the county will take over vehicles.
It's pretty self-explanatory. We went up and wrote some of this yesterday in conjunction with a request that you're going to see on your next court agenda. But everything looks to be in order. The 22 streets seem to be holding up well. There's no reason that I can think of that we would refuse to allow this. So I'm going to ask you to approve the admission of Santa Fe six and seven into the two-year land.
Make a motion to approve.
Leon, say, approve. All favor say aye.
Aye.
Likewise.
Turn upside.
Okay, number six, the consider and approve preliminary platform, Santa Fe subdivision, section 13. The LGA has approved this, correct?
Yes, sir.
Make a motion to approve.
Yeah, motion for Greg. Second, Bruce to approve. All favor say aye.
Thank you, Judge.
Yes, sir. Thank you. David.
My way. Santa Fe 13 is in 2001.
Number seven, for Mr. City.
I'm here.
Oh, there you are. Come on, Stephanie. Consider and approve awarding bid number 2203 for gasoline and these.
Yes, sir. So we went out to bid for these. The contract is, and current contract expires on the 20th. So if approved, these recommended vendors will have a contract for one year, beginning the 26th, and an option to renew two additional one-year periods after. So we have SNS Petroleum, SMS Petroleum, Struting for precincts three, and Suncoast Resources for all other precincts.
Now, I noticed you have a list of the bidders. Did we get response from, response from people like Whitehurst there?
These are, this tabulation page is now one of the responses we received. We did have a late response from a vendor that we were not able to open and pass send back. They did not meet the deadline for submission.
Make a motion to approve.
One. Two recommendations.
Yeah, motion for Bruce. Second, Leon to approve. All favor say aye. Likewise, next. Motion carries. Thank you. Also, from purchasing, consider and approve the purchase of a Bowmag BW120 SL5 tandem vaper tour roller from RB Everett due to buy board contract, move region number four. Motion for David. Second, Leon to approve. All favor say aye. Likewise.
Can I let me borrow some of this equipment? Can we let me borrow some of this equipment?
You'll even get a little bit.
I burned through with it.
Let's see. Don't sit down. You have family. You got ways to go. Consider and approve the lease purchase of a BW120 SL5 tandem vaper tour roller from Welch Bank from RB for Runway Ridge four. Oh, thank Greg. Motion, second, Greg. All favor say aye. Likewise, next. Motion carries. Number 10, consider and approve the purchase of a Dusan DX85R3 mini excavator and attachments from RB Everett due to buy board contract, move before. David, make a call.
Second.
Motion for David. Second, Bruce. All favor say aye. Motion carries. Thank you. Also, number 11, consider and approve the lease purchase of a Dusan DX85R3 mini excavator attachments from Welch Bank for RB4. Motion for David. Second, Bruce. All favor say aye. Thank you, Stephanie. Number 12, from Ms. Harris.
Yes, sir.
Consider and approve longevity pay to be paid November 30th, 2021 for years of service through December 31st, 2020. This is just our annual.
This is our annual longevity pay for years of service through the prior December. And in your packet, you have a longevity calculation register along with a list of folks who were terminated during 2021, who have the payment coming to them. There's a correction on that list. Mr. Aron on that list should not be on it. He was actually a part-time employee. So we'll remove the payment to him from that list. And also, I passed around another list, I think you all got it, additional folks who were terminated on December 31st that weren't included on the first list. Five additional ones are beginning to happen.
Make a motion to approve. Yeah, motion for Leon to approve. Second, Bruce. All favor say aye. Motion carries. Thank you. Thank you. Number 13, from our Bickerstaff attorneys. It's considered consideration discussion of coastal actions, adoption of county order approving the reconfiguration of county election precincts and designation of polling places, providing for effective dates and directing that required notices be given. Mr. Bush, you want to come up here and give us a little, a little dissertation, some speed? That might be a little bit longer than explanation. It might be necessary.
Having in your packets. Kind of out for you as well.
No, this is a precinct.
Yes, sir. Just a moment. Focus on the colors, not the red line. The biggest change to the voting precincts, we went from 30 down to 22 with one additional being number 22. We worked with Bickerstaff to do this in June as well. One thing that I did learn or through redistricting process is we needed to consider voting precincts with the commissioner precincts and JP precincts when we reconfigured your individual districts. Voting lines or voting precincts can't cross a JP precinct. They cannot cross a county commissioner line. If you load the map, you'll see box 30. Leon, that was in your precinct, and that's the craziest looking voting precinct that we have that we're opposing. And it looks that way. It's because they cannot cross JP lines and it cannot cross commissioner lines.
That's a Westlake.
It's the Westlake area. It's Cheryl Lawson's. We also did work with the Republican Party and the Democratic Party. They have city and county precinct chairs. We worked to not redistrict those folks out of their own territory, just like we worked for y'all as well. It is a comprehensive map. It does bring it down to 22. Box 31 is a new box. That is the city of Plum Grove. It breaks them out from the colony of the Plum Grove Old Precinct, number 23. There's been quite a bit of dispute. There's been both throwing errors in my office for we can't, we can only have one voting location per voting precinct. So I could not have a city of Plum Grove voting box and a Santa Fe administration building voting box because it's against the law. Although I have 1,800 registered voters in the Plum Grove Colony area, and I only have 400 voters in the city of Plum Grove. They each have their own set of issues. So to split that, I just created two brand-new voting boxes. It does combine a wide view precincts. Your other map shows you the four quadrants or your four commissioner precincts, and it shows you your each voting precinct that would be in the new districts. Combines Rye and Romeer, the Targington area, the Westlake and Old River. That's one area. Some of the communities obviously have to be an independent community. You can't combine everything in a voting precinct. Census blocks do dictate that as well, and like-minded communities also dictate those voting precincts as well. We are changing the JP boundaries in touch, and Tony Parrish's JP precinct three, the small area that used to be 27, voting precinct 27, that's about 50% of voters that vote in that box. Switches that up to precinct three, which is the Harding area. It's a pretty good map. I think it can last at least for two years. We can reach, we're going to adjust voting precincts every two years. With the growth that will be coming in the Dayton area, we can look at that again. Is there any questions thus far?
Yes, sir. Just to be, for clarification.
Yes, sir.
Then, within my precinct, I'm running a full box.
All right.
Correct.
Give us a big man.
Well. It's looking to be twenty ten, twenty.
It is four, yes, sir.
Okay, so we're looking at twenty five, ten, twenty one, and twenty two.
Yes, sir.
Twenty five, we'll show you.
I will, yes, sir, I believe so.
All right, twenty one, Kenneth.
Yes, sir.
Kim.
That's the admin building. Is I call it the Dayton admin building where they not. Yes, sir.
Or twenty five, we'll load it.
Rule shade.
Yeah, rule shade.
That is true, yes, sir. That's pretty important.
Yes. I've got to get my list. I did not bring that with me on where the actual feet folks are going to be voting. We will be adjusting some of the voting locations.
Rule shade south about, uh, uh.
Can't take.
Rule shade is north of Ten O'Way, you did, right?
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
They might, there, there's two churches that's real close. There's Highway Tabernacle, then there's another church down south that.
Yeah, there, there's one of the, there's one on the west side of three twenty one. That's where you're talking about.
Rule shade is on the east side.
Okay, I, I do get my church sent to you.
Uh, we're sure you're talking about.
No.
Are we talking, which church we talking about, Ray?
It's, uh. Uh, um, when you come out of the Ten O'Way, three twenty one. Uh, uh, I believe it's just a little north of Cannon's. It, it is, it is north of Cannon's. It'll be out there to the west.
We're sure it's in across from the water top. I mean, the water.
Yeah, yeah.
Yes, sir.
Knowing the water.
Okay, yes.
Yeah, that's, that will be a voting box, too. There, there's always been one that way, has it?
Yeah, it has for a long time, yes, yeah.
There's big field.
That particular precinct, if I'd have known what I know now, I would have drawn y'all's commissioner precincts a touch different for that particular area. I would have probably given you Dan Lakes, but anyway.
No, you wouldn't.
I've got, I've got two years. I've got two years.
I'll tell you in a dark alley.
We had everything finished and then, uh, Ms. Khan said we got a problem in twenty five. Um, so that was one of the last boxes that we worked on.
So we didn't reduce the number of boxes.
We did. We went from thirty to twenty two.
Twenty two.
Well, it's looped, thanks, that's.
Now, that's, just because they're numbered.
It's a lot.
We're, we're missing a bunch of.
We have the numbers on there, so you could be familiar with what we're talking about. It's like box twenty. That's in the Cleveland area. That is a, a protected box. We could have changed to box twelve. We figured that would be too much controversy and you wouldn't understand what box twelve is. So we call it box twenty because they actually took in another box. They added more people.
So we're going to have a box at City Hall or Plum Grove?
Yes, sir. Don't get hung up on the voting locations. If we go to vote centers, that's going to change everything. This is the voting lines. This is the vote. This is your home voting.
And we're not being, it's going to be a, not this year, we're going to vote center.
I have to think about that a little bit more. We really, everybody wants to audit everything right now. And I will tell you that voting centers are harder to audit. So while we're in the kick of auditing every election, I have to have a better paper trail and it's better to do that if you're going to be audited. Forensically audited. You still want to do your old fashioned vote precincts. I haven't decided yet. I'm still waiting. For the law to come out and for opinions to be disclosed and for the secretary of state to understand the new. Legal powers that they're having to do with audits as well. So I can't answer that today. We are moving that way. But I've got to set and see for about another month.
You know, with the commissioners lines being equal population coming for commissioners. And I'm looking at precinct one has eight boxes, which is twice as much as precinct.
I have a rule. I don't want anybody to drive longer than twenty miles.
So they, they, we got a real problems over here, Greg.
They don't, because we've actually put it to a map. Like Rye, Romeer does not need to drive to Harton to vote for the longest. That's what they used to do. Um, the problem with Rye, because there's not a place to vote anymore, except at Sean's Liquor. That is appropriate, but there is the Rasky.
You can vote in that, Greg, I'll say that.
The, the, the Rasky office building doesn't have an air conditioner, doesn't have electricity. We are Liberty County, but it's, the building's too bad shape. Um, this does rectify some of those issues.
So where will those affect the voting mix?
Both of those entities, they're going to be voting at the, um, let's see, First Baptist Church at Romeer.
Okay.
And they've been voting that way for about five elections thus far. We did look at voting patterns when we created these as well. Um. You know, just like Simmons' mom, I really want those folks to vote. Uh, the last election, one person voted out of the entire voting precinct, so. I didn't focus on them as much when I was trying to work on the liberty boxes to vote eighty percent.
Everybody got to drive more twenty miles to vote. I got to drive fifty miles to get those out of my precinct.
That's for you. That is one of my favorites. It's not perfect. I don't think it ever will be.
Uh, it looks pretty good, though.
We have not adjusted voting precinct lines. In five or three years.
So we. All right, we have a consideration discussion. That would need to cost a voucher.
I'm moving, we're approved, second.
Motion Greg, say, Leon, approve, all favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries, thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr..
Yes. Thank you, Ms. Tanger, for making all these maps for.
Next, number fourteen. Consider. Consider approve the contract for inmate home services with NCIC inmate communications.
And we had a, I think we approved the first one of these, uh. It's not last mission for Tom Ford. Uh, it had a request from sheriff's office, so, uh, I guess it's still changed, so we. Uh, the, the contract looks fine. Uh, nothing material has changed. Uh, I asked for y'all to approve.
Make a motion to approve.
Karen, you okay with it?
Yes, sir.
Thank you. Motion from Leon, say, Greg, all favor say aye. Motion carries, thank you, gentlemen. Also, number fifteen for Mr. Poston. Consider approve order revise of rules and regulations for non consent voting. In storage services in unincorporated area. I know you've been working on this a while.
We have, yes. Although there is another round of, uh, edits that we need to do. Uh, a little premature getting this on there, but we certainly expect that it, it will be ready for commissioners court approval, uh, at the next commissioners court.
What, what do you want to say?
Uh, just until the next meeting, yeah.
Table? Thank you. Motion Leon, say. Table, all favor say aye.
Aye.
Likewise, please. Motion carries, thank you, gentlemen. And Matthews, I understand this, this will not be. Out of the public record until it is passed before, is that correct?
Uh, what's that number?
See once reviewed, yes.
Uh, yes, that's correct, yeah. Well, I mean, you know, it's certainly, I guess, what, depending on changing, but I'm.
Well, I mean, there's probably some operators that would like to know what's going to say prior to the vote.
Oh, that's correct. Yes, that's correct.
And, uh, I just want to make sure that that's brought to the public, that. It's being drawn up.
Yes.
And once it's approved, it becomes public record. You can see it.
That's correct.
Okay, but if you have questions, they should contact your office, correct?
That, and I'm, uh, yeah, we have a good chat with them.
Good. All right, number, number sixteen for Mr. Poston. Uh, consider approve standard interlocal agreement delivery accounting MMD number one.
Uh, this is just a standard interlocal, uh, that we do with, uh, every, uh, other local governmental, uh, entity. And it's, uh, as y'all will recall, in order to have a specific interlocal, you have to have the general one first. So. We're really after, uh, uh, item seventeen, but we have to do sixteen first.
Make a motion to approve. Motion approved, Greg, all favor say aye. Likewise, please. Number seventeen, consider approve roadway agreement with MMD number one regarding construction of new road project.
Uh, yes, so I, I received this from the MMD number one folks. They are, um. Intent on building a new road that would join from fifty nine, uh, to ten ten to three twenty one to one oh five. Uh, a, a pretty, uh, good length of road there. So it, it appears, uh, that they're wanting either the county or the state to take over maintenance of the road after they build. So they'll build it, they'll pay for, uh, its construction. And then they, uh, are in the meantime, uh, trying to court the state into accepting it as an FM road. Uh, in which case they will be building it up to state standards or the county, in which case they'll build it up. Uh, we have had it, uh, other than we would be adopting a, you know, pretty good length of major road here. Uh, uh, is that, uh, we are also promising to lend our eminent domain authority in case there's too many issues on that. Uh, in land acquisition days.
As far as I remember, is this two line or four line?
I can tell you.
I think additionally, it'd be a two line.
It's two line, twenty?
There would be a farm roadway for, for a four line, but their original, original initial construction will be a two line.
Make a motion to approve.
Thank you. Motion from Bruce, say, Leon, approve, all favor say aye.
Aye.
Likewise, please. Motion carries, number eighteen, uh, consider approve rescinding commissioners court ruling from October twenty six, twenty twenty one. I'm going to ask that we move this into executive session. There's going to be a lot of discussion on this. And I need to vote. Someone make a motion, someone make a second.
Blue, we want to make a session, second.
Motion from Greg, say, Bruce, to executive session on this. All favor say aye.
Aye.
Likewise, please, okay. And we're going to do nineteen since. One eye. Uh, consider approve consulting services of Adele Cornoni. Addressing records management for precinct one road and bridge.
Well, we've got a lot of records that we have stored upstairs that I wanted to get rid of and before getting rid of them. I want to go through this consulting firm to make sure I'm on way information that, uh. We need for the county. Uh, that's just basically a proven, put them on a vendor's list.
Those are pretty important.
Coming out of my road and bridge funding.
Make a motion to approve. Thank you. Motion from Leon, say, Greg, approve, all favor say aye. Likewise.
And if our credit, uh, or is the section. The section, uh, y'all tending on consulting with, uh, your attorney under five five one dot oh seven one for that agenda item, uh, dealing with, uh, keywords.
Yes, sir.
Make a motion to go into regular session.
Sorry. All right, say aye. Ten fifty, yeah. Okay. And we went out at one nine.
Nine forty five is what I think.
No. Yeah, that's right. Ten fifty, we're back in regular session. We had two hours of discussion. Matthew. That one was a consider approve legal response to deficiencies.
Yes, uh, yeah, I would ask for a motion, uh, to make demand, uh, and proceed litigation, uh, if satisfactory responses proceed.
I move what he said, say.
Thank y'all. This is, all the favor say aye.
Aye.
Likewise, please. And number eighteen, uh, that consideration rescinding official ruling, what's the court's opinion?
Well, that's, listen to their legal advice and stuff. Uh, I guess move the table, Ed.
Take. Make a motion with that noise. Thank you. Got to say it. Motion take no action, second, uh, all favor say aye.
Aye.
Likewise, please. That motion carries and I need.
Make a motion to approve.
Favorite one. Motion to adjourn. Bruce, you got that? Greg, you got second. Maybe you want to second that one?
I agree.